Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. Now called to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice in mind. To begin the meeting, there are two A&R plans. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members, please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is two A&R plans. I will recuse myself at this time, and Jason will take over as chairman.
476 and 500 Lester Street. Is anyone here representing the applicant? Come forward and introduce yourself, please. Tell us a little bit about it.
For the record, Nick Fassendola, Level Design Group, here on behalf of the applicant, Seaboard Solar. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the 120-acre parcel into eight separate parcels. Seven of those would be non-budable parcels, as per current zoning regulations, and would not be able to house a dwelling or structure under the current zoning bylaw. Five of the parcels are large, over, say, about 15 to 20 acres each, and there are three parcels, there are 10-foot-wide strip parcels, which divide the other five parcels. Plan was prepared by Control Point Surveying out of Southborough, Massachusetts, so we did not prepare the plan. We are solely the applicant's consulting engineer on the project. Take any questions that the board may have at this moment?
Do you want to read away later, then?
Sure. Mr. Fassendola, I have been contact about the A&R. There was a light revision that was made. That has been done. It's not in ones that you have that's in these copies in front of us. It was adding language under the signature line. It was also adding unbuildable lot piece and the fact that it's in the Acrofer District. And they added non-budable lot on each of the parcels as shown on the plan for the two, for eight of the lot, seven of the eight lots. The only one that is considered a buildable lot is along with frontage on Lester Street. Has enough frontage. As far as my office is concerned, this plan meets the requirements of an A&R plan and is ready for the board's side.
John?
Hey, what's the purpose of the 10-foot wide strips?
They're essentially dividing parcels for future development, which the applicant is bringing to the town, probably to your attention at your next plan meeting, for a ground mounted solar facility. It'll be separated into five, about one and a half megawatt facilities, and will be separated by the 10-foot wide strips. The intent of the subdivision, that kind of goes along with the current DOER regulations and the way they allocate the credits. We'll get into more of that detail when we present the site plans to the board, but they are essentially dividing lots. Everything will remain under the same ownership, so Seaboard Solar Holdings will retain ownership of all eight lots.
Wendy? Any comment from anyone in the audience?
Confirm motion to endorse.
Confirm motion to endorse the plan?
I'll make that motion to endorse.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
Thank you very much.
Do I sign up as the chairman of the lot? The assistant to the assistant. A couple backups, right?
Yeah.
Just working on some of that.
Terrible revision. Give me a word. Give me a word. Hold mine.
He's got some stars in his face. Oh, that's right. He likes to take eight lines. Kids stay living in lines.
Won't be good color wise.
Nope. Go back to his adult coloring book. I'll keep this one night. I'll have to set this one up. Jackson, what? Wake up, Ron. Next item on our agenda is a discussion for 771 Southford Street, request for waivers
of site plan approval, public hearing requirement, and plan specifications for an outpatient dialysis clinic within an existing facility. Is the applicant present?
I'm Harry Cutsey. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the property, PCK Limited Partnership, of whom I'm a general partner, and also our new tenant, Auburn Health LLC, who do propose to put in this site, and we're trying to vote the former Outback site that we finally have leased after three years, a dialysis clinic. And what they propose to do is to use the existing building. They're going to widen, I think, two doors and add one additional doorway at the back of the property, and they need to put in a generator to the rear of the property. Other than that, they're not affecting the site. There might be some cosmetics to the exterior of the building, but the building footprint would not change. So, since there is no, not going to be any effect whatsoever on the topography of the site, the lighting, landscaping, the drainage, the elevations, the parking plan, ingress and regress, we're asking for a waiver of the site plan approval process.
Do they have the generator? Was it located in the back? Did you tell me that?
The generator is to be located in the back.
Is it run continuously or only in emergency?
It's only in emergency. It's an emergency generator. It's required until by the Massport Health.
What's, can you tell what the distance is from the generator to the property line?
It reads 31 feet, 31 feet and change.
Well, you can't put it on the east side because his neighbor's there. His neighbor's on the south side, and I don't know if there's any other location. Is there any other spot you could?
That's, that's the only practical spot. That's where the electrical is and the least offensive, I think, on the site.
I would imagine that it would be a brand-new generator and state-of-the-art.
State-of-the-art. They tell me that they, that it will have the most soundproof enclosure, and it's, it is state-of-the-art.
And it's probably diesel.
It's diesel.
The only thing I would say is that if we could have it with, if you can have somebody look, them look at, the exhaust pipe might be designed so that it would get it up over or above, so it's not right in some fashion, somebody's face in the back, because those houses go up the grade from.
Sure, there's, actually, the car lot directly behind.
The house all gone now?
No, there's a house that's more toward Appleton Road. This is going to be a little bit more away from the house and behind the car lot. But yes, they naturally would want to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, if you could, well, you showed it right by this Outback section of the building, didn't you, Matt? If it could go maybe over and right a little more, so that it's in back of the car lot, Harry?
It is pretty much there. The house is number 15.
Can you show it on that, Matt?
The house is number 15 and 17, which is pretty, there's a significant difference, distance from there.
We don't see the neighborhood parcels from there, but it's supposed to be right around here.
And there's also elevation change in the back of the.
Yeah, goes up.
The building, it goes up a little bit, so it seems to be the most practical space.
Well, if you had to talk to him.
It's not going to be offensive to other tenants. If they need to run their generator, they're going to hear it, not the other tenant.
You could just ask them about the generator and what it is.
Sure.
I'm good with that.
The specs, and I know that, I think that they, they did at least inform Captain Anderson of the fire department, and he wanted the specs as well, and he's not going to approve anything until the building inspector approves and inspection services.
I'm fine with that. I think it's a good use. Scott?
I think it's nice for us and the town itself to finally have that space to fill with, I think, a quality tenant.
Board members, Scott?
No, I don't see any reason not to grant a waiver under the circumstances.
John?
Oh, it's just on the generator. You know what the decibel output is?
Do not.
Should be 65 or lower.
Sure, it's significant.
Can you put something where you could ask Campbell to look at that? Do we have anybody else?
I can note it for now.
Note that we want to just see what John's request, what the decibel we're involved with the generator is.
Other than that, I have a problem.
Wendy?
One second.
One sec.
Mr. Crusay, I have a question.
Matt?
Thank you. So, well, I agree, this is a great use for the spot. I think it'd be wonderful for the town. Just design-wise and exterior-wise, this generator, is it, having spoken with Captain Anderson, does he believe that, and this hasn't been reviewed by DCG yet, because it came in as a waiver request and it was a quick turnaround, is this, I see existing fire lane, and I'm wondering if this generator is now in the middle of that fire lane? The other question I have is, I see a new dumpster location to be behind the dialysis center, wherein there are already two other dumpsters on the other side?
Well, currently, each tenant has the wrong dumpster, so I'd rather just follow suit. But we're happy to move the dumpster.
Yeah, I was wondering if they should be in the same spot. Right now, the dumpster's close to the resident, you know? So, I'd like to see that with the other ones. Not only that, what about the, I don't know, are there tanks being removed? I see existing manholes here. I'm not sure what they're for.
Manholes were grease traps, the red-backed steak cups. I think that, I think they are being used.
Okay.
This is beautiful.
There's definitely going to be a process for removing tanks or installing generator. Wherever the dumpster goes, the dumpster goes, as long as it's on a pad. I see a couple of, I don't have a work schedule, but a handful of weeks' worth of work that may have some construction hours right behind a residence. I just wonder, and it's completely up to the board's prerogative, if this should have a public hearing so you can weigh in on Butter's concerns, not only that, but a condition and approval of that, if necessary. This also gives an opportunity for the project to be reviewed by DCG on, like, the 15th this month, in advance of the next planning board meeting, which would be the 28th. Not to mention, if we are to move the dumpster, just as a small thing, if we were to vote tonight, we wouldn't be able to ask for that.
I can tell you, we would move the dumpster if that's, if that's a concern. We'd like to, we'd like to just move along, and this is the beginning of a process now that we've got to go through, and we can't just, because of your vote tonight, install a generator. There's many more people involved and each more review.
As far as the fire lane, Matt, you have 30 feet to the property line. Say the dumpster takes up 12 feet, leaves you 18.
Well, the property line cuts over, I think, there.
I can't tell edge of pavement versus property line, so are they the same or are they different?
We have an existing concrete curb in the back.
That the dumpsters sit on.
That's in front of it.
And that, that section kicks back a little further than the rest of what it looks like here.
A little down.
And I would say the generator's only eight feet in width, and maybe 15, 18 feet in length.
So, there's no reason.
So, they should be able to come in with the fire lane and come right in through there.
Straight through.
Harry, can they go on the east side of the building? Is that asphalt? Is that clear as the property line right there with the trees?
It's not the property line, but underneath there are propane tanks.
So, there seems to be no opposition or anything from the board. Are you, is there anything you want to condition, get a statement for?
No, those are my comments. It's, if the board votes to give the waivers, they offer your right to condition the project.
Because all the drainage has been existing forever, and it's a pretty new parking lot.
It's a relatively new parking lot, yeah.
Scott, how do you feel?
Same. Need to look into it further.
John?
One sec.
Wendy? One sec with this thing. Jason? Is there any public comment on this?
It's just a discussion. My only item, Mr. Brooks, if the board's ready to boil a waiver, is to request the dumpster to be moved to open up that fire lane.
If, should we condition it if Captain Anderson?
We can't condition this thing. We can just request the applicant. Has these conversations with the right people, but.
For the dumpster, is that the issue?
Yeah, for the generator, make sure that.
The generator, it's got to go through the process. The only inspector's going to be involved, the fire chiefs, it's going to be involved.
Agreed.
Everybody is involved.
We're just looking at, Harry, I think, everyone, and Matt, thinking that instead of being right, touching the back of the building, is it, all right, if it goes back maybe to the property line, and then they get their clear aisle for the thing?
The generator or the?
Yes, generator.
Oh, I wasn't asking for that, Mr. Chairman. The generator's fine there.
You're only concerned about the dumpster.
Yeah, I'd like to move the dumpster so the fire truck doesn't have to snake its way through there, if that's the case.
I think there's quite a bit of space there.
Even so, the dumpster is proposed closer to a resident right now. I'd rather it was with a group of other dumpsters. But again.
What's going to go in the dumpsters? I know where the dialysis, you're going to have biohazard.
It's going to be just normal office-type rubbish. The extra door that they're going to put in the back is for the hazardous waste, which is needles and whatever, medical supplies, and that's going to be in a storage room and taken separately through that back door to the facility.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to grant the waivers with, how did you want it to say?
I can't condition it.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
I'll draft something tomorrow, and.
Sure.
I'll get it over to yourself or to Michelle?
Either way. Appreciate it. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is a 7 o'clock public hearing. The applicant is Andrew Lawton, Impact Fitness, requesting a modification of an approved site plan under Section 3.2.5.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the revision of an access driveway on properties located at 314 Washington Street. This was continued from October 10th, 2017.
Good evening. I'm Andrew, the applicant. So, this is a continuation from our last meeting, where we met with the Butters. So, we met all the requirements that the Butters was looking for, changing the grade in the back of the lot down to 10%, that was a 16 before, and we had a peer review, but what we're getting requested was a separator, and we made that change on the plan, so I believe that it was sent over this morning.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something?
Yes.
I just want to add for the record that Ms. Stine Overe, despite being absent last meeting, has watched the video from the last meeting, signed a affidavit, so she'll be eligible to vote. Just want to make that clear for the record. As Mr. Lawton has described, this has been peer reviewed. We have received comments back from the consultant. It's the same original peer review consultant we used the first time that this came through back in May. As Mr. Lawton pointed out, the first thing that they did was make amendments to the plan based on feedback received from Maria Butters, being Mr. Reisner, as you mentioned, and some other items. I did receive an email from Mr. Reisner stating that he's satisfied with the changes made to the plan, so therefore I am satisfied. In regards to the peer review, as Mr. Lawton mentioned, the, it's not an oil-water separator, it's a soil and grit separator?
Grit, yeah.
Okay. That has been added to the plans because of the soil type, despite not, you locate according to our boundaries in Acrofer Zone 2, the soils reflected it, so the engineer recommended that that would be installed as part of it, and the applicant has complied. So, my, I also spoke to the Captain Anderson of the fire department, asking him to just review the driveway with the latest addition of the plan to make sure that he has no concerns and he echoed the same, that he's satisfied with the changes, and it should be everything.
Scott, any questions?
Matt, did we receive the judgment council that they were backing off their demand?
I received it from the applicant directly. He was going to request that he receive something from his attorney, but within the email reads that let this letter serve and that we are satisfied with the amendments. The other thing that was changed, per Mr. Reagan's comment at previous meeting, was the slope of the driveway was changed back down from 16% to 10%.
I think I mentioned that the frames and covers and castings were barren. They don't exist anymore, and it's still on the plans.
Oh, that's the animal company, right?
Yep. EJ, yeah. All different spec number, model number. I don't think I can hold anybody up over that, but it just, let's keep with it, Mr. Engineer. Let's keep with it, Mr. Engineer.
Can you talk to him?
Absolutely.
Exactly, tell him exactly what you mean, the name of the, on the covers, or it's not the right system?
Who makes the covers? The manufacturer, the Baron poundery's no longer in business. The molds have all been broken. They're bought out by a company called EJ, and they have all different model number.
Can you address that for them?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure they have a equivalent, another company that'll make them.
Oh, sure they do, but you nicely named them, so I know what we're getting, or what you're getting.
I think you brought it up last time.
I know last time you spoke about the Z-sheets. Yeah, using those. I know you made those changes on there.
Wendy?
One sec.
Jason?
One sec.
One sec. Do we have a motion?
Motion to close.
To close the public hearing.
Make that motion?
Oh, first, is there any comment from the public? There being none? Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We have a motion to grant the request for a modification.
Make that motion?
One sec.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, call it a draft decision, as I mentioned previously. Wasn't sure if the board had any new conditions that they wanted to add to approval. Carryover the original conditions from May, that's, that's easy enough, and I can just transfer those right on.
Do you have any suggestions?
I didn't have anything else to add unless you wanted to add what Mr. Reagan.
Do you want to read what they were?
Sure. Sure, the original conditions were construction hours. They're standard, standard hours. We didn't make any changes. I've been working with the town engineer to update approved plans to modify curbing at the Washington Street egress. I believe that was done as part of this. That condition does not have to transfer. The town engineer must have proposed curb cuts prior to construction, which still applies. Have they already done the curb cuts? I don't think so.
No, you don't.
Work with that stuff to remove existing trees. Okay, I know you did a bunch, you do them all, all the trees.
Two left and a right.
So, leave that condition also. And buy viol approvals, conditions from other departments. Project should be developed in accordance with approved plan and submit NASBIL plan once it's finished.
Want to add anything else, anyone?
Nope.
Okay.
So, if the board may, I can finish the decision and just transfer everything, but I'll take your signatures now, and then I'll circulate the decision for your review, and then I'll disperse it.
That's fine.
Distribute it. for sub-plan review, so once you receive it back, you're good to go.
Awesome.
All right, one sec. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Go enjoy the rest of the evening.
You too.
This one continue to? I think I'm up to it. I thought you looked at the yellow, but I think Jason stole one.
It still applies. Have they already done the curb cuts? I don't think so.
No, you don't.
Work with Mastiff to remove existing trees. Okay, I know you did a bunch, you do them all, all the trees.
Two left and a right.
So leave that condition also. And by viol approvals, conditions from other departments. Project shall be developed in accordance with approved plan and submit master plan once it's finished.
Want to add anything else, anyone?
Nope.
Okay.
So if the board may, I can finish the decision and just transfer everything, but I'll take your signatures now and then I'll circulate the decision for your review and then I'll disperse it.
That's fine.
Distribute it. I'll have that decision finished this week. And once it's done, there's no pill Perry for subplan review, so once you receive it back, you're good to go.
Awesome.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Go enjoy the rest of the evening.
You too.
The next item on the agenda is a 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is Masad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the urban zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. This was continued from October 10th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I received another continuance request for this. Bear in mind, this is the site plan portion of the review. We have a decision on the subdivision to discuss after the public hearings tonight. So this is just the site plan that's being continued and we'll get used to seeing it on the agenda. It'll be there for a while.
Just need a motion to continue the public hearing.
That is all. To November 28th.
Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing until November 28th?
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. At this time, if there's anyone present for the SWEB Development USA LLC requesting site plan approval at 4:30 Rochdale Street, Marvin, the solar farm. Does anyone here for that? It's been continued.
Okay.
Two.
At the applicant's request? Yes. I received the continuance request from the applicant, Mike Carey, from...
SWEB.
Yes. SWEB Solar. And their reason being is that they have a public hearing scheduled for the zoning board on the 16th, which would govern the use. So they felt it was unnecessary to review the site plan design in advance of getting the use approved. So it's only fair, we tell folks now, even though we have two more hearings ahead of it, so you're not sitting there waiting just for us to tell you that it's continued.
You should have told me to, but that's okay. I'm glad he told you.
So you were here on their behalf?
I was, yeah. Ready to present if you guys wanted to hear it, but he's asked for a continuance and obviously wished to respect that, so.
All right. Have a good evening.
The only other... The one thing I'd like to do before we vote on that continuance, my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, we can go over the rest of them and then come to the...
To the back, to the...
Yeah. I just want to... I just want the board to engage the peer review before we continue, that's all.
On the side. On your...
No, on the solar project. But Jason would have to do it, you'd have to refuse. So I'll do the other two first.
Next item on the agenda is a... The next item on the agenda is a 7:20 applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated, requesting a modification of an approved definitive subdivision plan known as the Reserve at Ashworth Hill, located off Blaker Street. This was continued from October 10th, 2017. Can you state your names and...
Sure.
Van T, Shannon, probably. No, I was probably...
Good evening. My name is Chad Borden, representing Eastland Partners with the Ashworth Hill modification subdivision. We've been in quite a few times, continued quite a few times, going back and forth to Graves, a few rounds, and several revisions were done, back and forth. We're here tonight to respond on the third round, or actually the second round, which was really small, minor edits that Graves found in their letter. I think what was done before is gone over the letter, each line item, and we can address them. And Pete Lavoy here is the lead engineer on the job, and he can eloquently go over each item and call out where those particular revisions are located and ask him, answer any questions that you may have regarding the project as well. So I might want to hand it over to Pete and...
Can you put the board...
I need to have...
Okay, just for the record, my name is Pete Lavoy and I am the project engineer on this project. So I did receive a comment letter from Graves on October 6th. It had roughly, probably six comments, and I'm going to go through those now. The first comment, there was a line, this line right here that's shown on the upper side of the street, which wasn't identifying what it was. So I did add a note on the plan view and the profile sheet stating that it's underground electric telephone and cable. So that was the first comment.
That's comment number one.
Yeah, comment number one. Comment number 15 was regarding the drain, this drain line from Drain Manhole 4 to Drain Manhole 3. On my rational spreadsheet, how I sized the pipes, it was labeled as a 15, but on the profile, it was labeled as a 12. So I changed the profile to the 15 because the amount of water that's going to get into that drain line has to go in a 15 inch. It was just a mislabel on the profile. Number 17, I think was regarding the riprap calculations. I did email those calculations to Jeff, and then when I emailed it to him, he found the calculations that he couldn't find when he was doing the review. So that's why we didn't write it in the comment. There really wasn't a comment.
What was the second one?
That was 17.
Okay, what was the second one?
15 was the second one. Number 18, regarding this area here, the proposed grading, we do show a proposed wall in this location here. Because of the height, Jeff wanted me to add a fence along the back of the retaining wall. It's not going to be in the retaining wall because it's not going to be a reinforced concrete wall. It's going to be behind it because it's going to be a dry stone wall. So that's... So it's shown on the plan view as well as the profile sheet, and it is labeled. So that was number 18. Number 20 was regarding the rim elevation on basin 1 and the outlet pipe for basin 2 was revised in... Because it was on two different sheets. I have a detail sheet. Detail sheet is number 10, and the plan view is number 7. The two elevations didn't correspond with each other. It was another drafting error. So they now correspond. So what's shown on that plan view is also on the detail sheet. The detail sheet just blows up the basin, so it gives more detail when they're building it. If you look on sheet 10. Number 24 was regarding the profile. On the profile, going through the cul-de-sac here, I had a proposed centerline grade of 5.2 to 9%, and the minimum required is 4%. So I had to change the grade here in this location here, and now it's 3.85. If you look at the profile sheet, it calls that out. So I'm well under that 4%. That's the minimum requirement through a cul-de-sac. So that was changed on the profile sheet as well as the plan view. Number 25, on the bottom of the profile sheet, from Station 500 to 974, the elevations were missing, the layer was frozen. So that was another drafting error, so the elevations are on the bottom of the profile now between Station 500 and Station 974. Number 26, the drain pipe at Drain Manhole 3, the larger pipe is a 24 and it's coming down in a 15 inch. So Jeff wants the crown of the pipe to all match, so I had to raise the 15 inch pipe so the crowns of the pipe all match at that location. It was just a... It didn't change anything, just the slope in this pipe was already, you know, steep enough, so that's what I did. That was just a drafting change. The last one, number 27, previously, we had a long finger that came down like this, but this basin was smaller. So what we did is we removed that finger and piped it and increased the size of this basin. So the volume that was in this little finger that was roughly here is now incorporated into this basin here. So the volume never changed, just the shape of the basin changed. That's the only thing that changed. So this still has the required volume that was previously, that it was designed for. And that's basically all the comments that we made.
Board members, Scott, John, Wendy?
Jason?
All set. Matt?
Just a couple of small technical things since we weren't here before. I believe the plan still called for Artemis Drive. However, reached out to the town clerk last week and she did certify the extension name of Albert Street because that was a safety factor. But I think the fire department, or one of you guys perhaps, that it made sense to call it Albert Street, the new rim, or less than Albert Street extension for the most part. And I think previously you already had the traffic report identifying how the intersection is far better than what was previously, obviously, approved. And I think that's it, I think.
Is there any... Is there any public comment on this?
Stop Marklandon, One Hames Drive. Is the road... What's this? Is the road still coming in off of where the Red House was? Or is the road now coming off of, straight across Albert... Is now coming straight across Albert Street?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that's... And then the other questions are, just as the season is coming to an end, do they plan on finishing up Albert Street with the...
Yes. Actually, that's a good point. My supervisor talked to Bill Coyle, and they have a game plan of actually, I think they're doing it this week, of lowering the structures for snowplows. So that's all taken care of, and Bill does know about that as well.
Are they going to get the people... Are they going to get their hydro seeded this year or are they going to be in the springtime for the traffic cones and the waddles?
We're probably going to do a, it's like a winter rye mix just for now.
Gotcha.
And then in the spring, be redone.
I know a lot of people went out around today, so that was one of the...
Yeah, that would be, yeah, we've just got to have it somewhat stabilized, and then in the spring, it'll be final, regrading and stuff like that.
So you're going closer to Mandela's property now?
Uh, Mandela, sorry.
Mandela's going to be the house... The house is two up.
Two up? Yes, we're next to Cocker. So pretty much Albert, if you were driving down Albert Street, it's going to go straight and then kind of bear, bear on an angle up and in.
Matt?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So in speaking with our peer review consultant, this was recently having in touch with Mr. Lavoy. Mr. Wallace wasn't sure if he should do a third review on this or not, but I wanted, in speaking with Mr. Borden today, I said, let's just try our regular procedure now where we go over the comment list with the board, see if any of those things are considered major in anyone's opinion before we decide if we want to...
Those that be addressed.
Yes. Before we, if, before the board wants to consider a third review, which may not be required given the presentation. So the town clerk item for the street name is something that I was going to bring up. The only plan amendment that I see necessary.
So from Artemis.
Yeah, and that can be done on the endorsed, the bylaws, or when they're ready to endorse the plan. So I'm okay with that. It can be a condition of our approval if necessary. I just wanted to ask about waivers, and I apologize if I hadn't prepped any of this. The four waivers that are being requested, just to reiterate, is the scale of the project because of the size of the property, staking the centerline, time of submission.
When you... What was the first way of the scale?
The scale is, it's one inch equals 80 feet instead of one inch equals 40 feet, so they got to fit the whole thing on one.
That's on the existing condition plan. Because it was such a big piece.
You want it to be one inch equals...
No, no, I don't. I'm just reading the waivers, just so we know what they are. I'm fine with the way it's presented, so. Staking the centerline, time of submission, we waived it at the last approval. Location of existing trees over 12 inches diameter, four feet above grade, and there's so many trees out there, I don't want to be the person who would take on the task.
What did we say on the last time?
We waived that.
We waived that?
Yeah. And waivers for the length of the denton street since it's 974 feet instead of...
And we waived it.
Well, now it's a waiver. This was not part of the last.
Okay, so those are all the waivers that we need to vote on?
Yeah, we just have to vote on the floor. You can grant them as a blanket, but after the hearings close, I just wanted to read them all again so we don't forget them. And my other item is phased, oh, I'm sorry, status of the conservation commission. You guys filed a amended order of conditions.
Yes, the conservation commission has to amend the order of conditions. I had to actually go to the meeting to open it up, even though no work was done. Technically, they have to amend it to do a new plan reference. So we're there next Wednesday for that, for them to say, you know, an update from you guys would be obviously great. Graves, and they have to refer their amendment order to the new plan, technically. Yeah, technicality.
I have a question to the applicant through the chair. I'm sorry, I took the plan down. Now that you've increased the size of that tension base and by removing the finger on and piping it instead, did it increase any well and impact? That's going to change...
No, no, all the disturbance within the buffer zone is basically the same. All the change in the project is outside of the buffer zone.
And my last piece is something that Mr. Coyle mentioned when he was filling in for me during my absence was phased construction. I don't know if it's a... I think there's a phased construction sheet in here per se, but I just wanted to ask the applicant, general construction schedule or phasing, what would you do first, what would you do next?
The largest thing in phase construction would be to cut the trees and establish the erosion control ponds ASAP, so there's no runoff. All the silt flats has already been flagged, the limited clearing's been flagged, even some of the areas that we stopped have been already done. The next thing would be to establish the ponds and again, do temporary control measures, hay bales and things that are everted out on the street now, in case it does rain, when we start to strip the material, that's going into a settling pond and treated properly. That's the biggest thing for the phase.
Yeah, I agree. I definitely agree. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is... Oh, sorry. The waivers are here. And I just want to bring up the original approval, discuss all weekend, two conditions after it's closed. I was just curious what's going to stay, what's going to go. But as far as construction hours, last time for the approval, we did eight to 4:30 Monday through Friday, 8:30 to noon on Saturdays, Sundays are holidays. And there was one fairly important one of construction vehicles enter the site using Albert Street, enter and exit.
And not coming down Takeahill onto Blaker.
Correct. And then some other standard conditions.
So we would have to close the public hearing, vote, and only if it's an approval do we reset these waivers, vote on the waivers. But before we do, waiver request for definitive plan scale section 3321, scale three, one inch equals 80 feet per parcel B instead of one inch equals 40. Waiver request for staking centerline at time of submission per section. Waiver request for location of existing trees over 12 inches and four feet above grade per section. That's a, a requirement in the last one. And waiver request for length of dead-end street per section 4272A. What was, what did we approve on the length of the street before? Or we haven't?
Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't the same. I think, uh, the road was, I forget how that works.
I believe the road was technically 740 feet, uh, before. Uh, I think the zoning calls up for 800 to the...
No, with the cul-de-sac, no longer than 800.
Yeah, from the, the middle of the cul-de-sac it's moved from. I think our original was 740, I believe.
Yeah, I think so.
Now you're at 974.
Uh, now we're at 910 or so, not to the, to the middle, it's nine.
So this says 974, waiver request for length of dead-end street per section.
Yeah, the 974 goes to the end.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a type of...
Okay, so it's nine...
20 plus 10 or 20, somewhere around there maybe, yeah.
To the, to the 800 feet. And why was it that it went from the 720, just to refresh everyone from this, up to this 974? Didn't you do something that you...
Yeah, I, well, what happened was, we kept the cul-de-sac in the exact same location as the previously approved plan.
And moved the road, road over to line up with Blake, with Albert Street coming in?
Yep, exactly. Pete lined up exactly where it was. We thought we'd keep it in the same spot for the, you know, for the grading and just extended it out. With doing that, it brought it another 110 or 20 feet.
Well, it's, it is a much better situation, I think.
True, yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, can I add anything?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just remembered this. Uh, part of our first discussion when this came in was to ensure that the tension ponds are on one line. And it looks like by adding the pipe, uh, that you mentioned in, from one of the engineering comments, you guys were able to keep both the tension areas on a separate parcel.
Yes, yeah.
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah. Yep. And it's all fenced and, uh, access is all the way around it as well, yeah.
Do we have a public comment?
Oh, again, Marklinville, Oneings Drive, the only problem, the, uh, question that the other neighbors had was now it's coming up closer behind, behind the other houses, which is, again, I know there, people aren't here because of family issues, but that was their only concern, was the fact that now the access road to get to your four houses is coming closer to the neighbors by, what was that, 200 feet or so, 400 feet? That's their, that's the only thing that we're having issues with is... Yeah, and you go from the seven, when you go from the 710 to the 974...
It's probably two, yeah, it's probably 210 feet.
Yeah, maybe, sure, maybe.
Cause that, that, that 210 is the distance, basically what'd be added to get to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
I just think that given though that they shifted it and it lines up with Albert...
Yeah, I understand.
It's just a much, much better situation, you know?
The cut's a little less significant as well, believe it or not. I know that was some of the issues with Graves at first, and the cut isn't as bad as well.
About the edge of the right of way from the nearest property line.
The right of way to the property line, you're looking probably, you know, five feet?
Right at the corner.
At the corner, but back here.
Changes the 60, 70, 80 feet or so, yeah, from the lot line, from Mr. Cocker anyways.
Do we have a motion?
Two seconds, can I ask one more question? I apologize. Where are the streetlights located, are there any? I never thought to ask that in, in...
Yeah, they're on.
Yeah, they're on, they're on here. Um, there's a streetlight in the, yeah, there's a streetlight in the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Um, there are, there is a hydrant in the cul-de-sac and then there's a hydrant, uh, basically around 500.
Yep.
And then there's probably another streetlight and another hydrant at the beginning.
Yeah, the hydrant's being moved. We worked with the water department, uh, with that one and the fire department wanted it at the time. Yeah, it looks like it's, it's like a three, yeah. Wanted here, wanted the cul-de-sac and you got one over there, maybe Pete? How is the town with, that seems to be a real sensitive issue with some of the towns that have his, uh, streetlights. Some towns don't even want them now, now that, that seems to be the new thing.
Yeah, Auburn, I assume these will be underground utilities and whatnot. But Auburn has, uh, just took a vote at town meeting to convert all of its lights to LED.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
So I would, I would recommend that these are...
We would do LED anyways, yeah.
John, how many would you suggest that we should have?
Yeah, about every 150 feet.
This being a dead-end neighborhood? Well, I'm just...
Yeah, right now.
There's no regulation on that.
Is there a deep, street light detail or anything too? Is it, no?
Would you be in objection to put them at every 150 feet?
No, of course not, I mean...
We're okay with that?
I don't think it's needed.
Go ahead.
You won't be saying that when you have a flat tire and you're walking up the hill by yourself at night.
Then I bet the neighbors are complaining about the light that it gives off as well. So it's a catch 22 both ways.
That's kinda where I'm going with it.
Do they wanna have it lit up like it's a stadium next to it? No, I think it's fine.
That's true, that is a good point.
That's, that was a good point.
Do we want?
Reason being, I'm sure that there's not a, a street light every 100 feet already on Blaker or Albert Street. So, uh, this would be far more lighting than what's already there. So, I, I just wanted to see where they were and...
I could potentially move one of these lights as well, cause I believe there's one at the intersection down here at this pole.
At the intersection?
There is one. So having one across the street, I mean, I could kinda...
Put it up a little bit.
Put it here and slide it and slide the other one, space them, space them a little.
All right, you're all right, Scott, just leaving it, let him move the other one as he sees best.
Maybe roll ways up towards the curve.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
What else?
Wendy? All right. Need a motion to close the public hearing.
You'll make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is a vote. We need a motion to approve the request for a modification of an approved definitive subdivision plan.
With conditions?
With conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we need to vote on the waivers.
Yes, sir.
And I'll read them again, Matt, and then we can, uh, vote them on as a whole. Okay, first waiver is a request for a definitive plan scale, section 3321, scale to be one inch equals 80 feet for parcel B instead of one inch equals 40 feet. B, waiver request for staking center line at time of submittal per section 3321T. C, waiver request for location of existing trees over 12 inch diameter and four feet above grade per section 3321Q. D, waiver request for length of dead-end street per section 4272A, length of dead-end to be 974 feet instead of 800 feet. Do we have a motion to vote on the waivers? Approve the waivers?
Make the motion to approve the waivers?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Just want to review conditions, just over here, with the applicant. Conditions from the previous approval are a lot of our standards, all hands up now. We will need them later, I'm sure. Okay. Applicant abide by all requirements of subdivision control laws as well as Auburn's planning board rules and regs. Abide by all approvals and requirements of other town boards, departments, and commissions. Construct the development according to the approved plan. Any future modifications to the approved plan apart from any conditions set forth by this decision must be formally submitted to the board for review. Subdivision is limited to, in the past it was four lots, now it is five lots. I'm sorry, five house lots.
Two drainage parcels? Parcell C, if we have a parcel A, it's up in the corner there. It's just that small little, you know, that little triangle piece.
It's not available?
No, it's not a buildable lot.
So it's...
One drainage parcel.
And one, and two vacant lots.
Correct.
Parcel B and parcel A.
Okay.
Thank you. Big one.
Six. Let's see, uh, sure, if you require to submit, I'm sorry, this one would be removed. It's submit three proposed street names, but I would recommend that that condition is changed to...
Yep.
The, the plan will be updated to include the name of Albert Street on the, prior to endorsement of the plan.
We get the street number from the...
That would, that would be probably added as well, put that in there as well.
And the street numbers to those. Including the vacant lot, that's parcel B, that should happen also. Ensure all final recorded easement documents provided to the board prior to the board's endorsement. Sustain the condition. Have lots, uh, shall have soil testing performed or less than soil evaluation.
Yeah, we're all set with that.
Yeah, you're all set with that.
Okay. Supply for and secure performance guarantee with the upper plant board within two years of the day of definit, of definitive subdivision approval. Failure to reply for such performance guarantee with, within the two-year period shall result in automatic rescission of the approval. Applicant shall obtain approval from town engineer to install appropriate street lighting. Fortune, it's like we're a fortune time now. Construction vehicles shall not park within the right of way for loading or unloading materials in a manner which hinders traffic circulation unless police details approved by the chief police. Construction vehicles must enter and exit the site using Albert Street and shall not enter or exit property of Tinker Hill Road. That's a situation like you had before, you had, you had a public safety issue with a hole in the street and they had to close down for the day.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Just as we worked through that, you know, just let the town down in a situation like that.
We also put a stop sign, I guess there were some accidents going on. So, uh, we work with Bill and there's a, a large stop sign, uh, down there as well. Hopefully that's been working.
And then construction hours was eight to 4:30 Monday through Friday. And 8:30 to noon on Saturdays, with no work to perform, Sundays are holidays. That was all the conditions from the previous approval. See what we consider adding. I'll very, discuss that. So those would be the conditions, Mr. Chairman.
You've got them all written?
Yes, sir.
We need to vote to approve that.
Well, that's the vote.
Everybody okay with that?
We can do a roll call since you've already voted.
Scott, the conditions that Matt just read, you okay? John, Wendy?
Yes, Jason.
Good.
Awesome, so I, uh, will draft the decision. It's gonna be remarkably similar to the first, uh, but I did bring a signature page. This'll be a lot easier for me to just transfer. I have signatures available, instead of waiting until 28. Excellent. Let's go. Excellent. I think that's it. So I will draft the decision. I'll circulate it to the board for their review and blessing. I'll attach signature page stamp with the town clerk, it'll start the clock for the vote period.
Yep, correct.
Uh, after that has passed, you'll pick this up from the town clerk, uh, for its recording. And from there, then, uh, you'll prepare the milar and the, and the covenant.
Yep.
For us to, uh, for the board to endorse.
Sure, yep. Excellent, okay, great, great.
Thank you for your time.
Aye. Next, we have a 7:30 PM public hearing. The applicant is Ferges LLC requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the proposed use of a beauty shop on properties located at 781 Southford Street and 4 Appleton Road. This public hearing has been continued from October 10th, 2017. Is the applicant here?
Yes. So my name is Brian Larchelle, Graves Engineering, representing our client, uh, Deanna Mills, uh, Prides LLC. So we presented in September, um, briefly, um, on this project. If you'd like, I can present again or explain things further. But since that's, that time, Burton Engineering has performed a peer review. We've had a couple rounds of, uh, one round of revisions and they've since issued a, a letter acknowledging those revisions.
Seth? Sure, I can elaborate slightly further. So the original, um, peer review for this was, was done by Burton Engineering. We originally reached out to Quinn, their, their timetable wasn't as, as good for the hearing, so Burton was able to do the project. They gave us the first view on the 23rd, response letter promptly, right after by Graves the next day. Just in their comments and their responses to that. And then on November 2nd was the follow-up peer review by Burton Engineering, to which, uh, they had, um, well, typically what I'd like to do is go over these just like we, uh, did earlier with, uh, with Ashworth Hill and just make sure that the comments are gonna trust. So...
Would you like me to go through them?
Yes, sir. Through the chair.
The ones that have outstanding, uh, comments or the ones that, including the ones that were acknowledged with no further comment?
This'll be the first one, which is kinda the bottom of the page.
Yep, okay.
And then numbers three, eight, 10, 11, and on the last page, it's gonna, well, the big one at the end there.
Number two?
Yes, that one.
Um, so the lighting plan, um, we didn't feel that a lighting plan was necessary. We don't believe that's actually a requirement from the town to submit some kind of photometric plan. Furthermore, uh, it's a pretty modest, uh, project. It's only, um, three wall pack lightings, uh, that are proposed on the building itself. So it's gonna have minimal impact on surrounding areas and the surrounding, uh, parcels are commercial. So we do not feel that any additional lighting plans or photometric plans are necessary. We did also add a note on the plans specifying that the light should be dark sky compliant and meet the town's standards.
And I just want to just chip in on that. This business is surrounded by business. It is not abiding residences on any sides, correct?
Correct.
We don't require a lighting photometric with a zero at the property line? I mean, not, not on this maybe, but, um, we do.
It's, it doesn't necessarily have to be a photometric plan, uh, as, as the engineer was mentioning, but, um, the board can condition lighting as they see fit. Either way.
Um, so number three on page two, uh, is about test pits, uh, soil test pits. They have not been conducted. Uh, we've done our due diligence as, as possible without doing the test pits. We realize that there's, uh, high groundwater, uh, likely in the area of the, um, near the budding wetlands. So this stormwater facility has been designed as such, assuming that the groundwater is high. There is a proposed subsurface infiltration system, um, that's receiving runoff from the roof. We're proposing to do test pits at the time of construction, um, just being mindful of our, our client's costs and having to mobilize contractor twice. And if it's necessary to revise design for that infiltration system, we'll do so after doing that testing.
The, um, through the chair, the recommendation from the consultant was, uh, this could be, uh, considered as a requirement, I'm sorry, a requirement for conducting this test pit as a condition of approval, is what they recommend. Consistently done that.
It is wetting, yeah.
All of Appleton Road is wet. All of Appleton Road is wet.
Um, so number eight on page four. So number eight on page four. So this is concerning landscaping. I believe it's concerning the landscaping on this side, the western side. We're kind of limited as to what we can plant here because it's a fairly steep slope. So we proposed juniper bushes, I believe. And I think the variety might not be up to the town's standards for landscaping. But the budding business, there's no doors or windows on that side. That's pretty minimal effect. That's what proposed landscaping that we have, it's gonna have. We do have two trees on the other side of the property. The bioretention basin itself has a number of plantings in it. It's not exactly shown on that sheet, but it's shown on a detailed sheet later in the plans that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the landscaping bylaw requires, now the minimum requirements, I'm sorry, this minimum includes two trees and five shrubs. But the proposal consists of solely shrubs because of the grade.
Because of the grade in that area, yes. It's a fairly steep slope coming down from the proposed parking area.
So the board has the authority to waive the requirements of landscape bylaws they see fit. In my opinion, Mr. Chairman, I think trees, as much as I tend to favor them, I think they wouldn't be helpful in this, in this case. I think it creates more problems.
We can talk about it, Dan.
There is one tree that is existing that is proposed to remain, we're to protect it. And that's, yeah, in the corner. Yep. Is there any further questions on landscaping at the moment? Number ten on page four is about the proposed gravel parking area. We've proposed reclaimed asphalt to be placed in this area and that's just to conserve some cost for our client. It's been designed and modeled as if it was impervious, because when reclaimed asphalt is compacted, it's basically impervious. So we've modeled it as if it was asphalt, so it's not gonna affect the stormwater calcs. I believe that satisfied the review consultant.
I don't myself believe that the compacted millings from the asphalt are as impervious as asphalt itself. I just don't believe that. And I mean, even if they're hot plain, they'll compact better than cold plain, but they'll still be impervious. And I think we need to have probably solid asphalt there. Something that won't absorb or won't allow any oil or anything, do we have groundwater?
Look, this is Zach for zone two.
Through the chair. That's the least of my worries is the impermeability. That's in the snow storage area, that's going right in the snow storage area and right over the bank. Ground's not frozen, first a second snowstorm, you can kiss it goodbye.
The millings?
Yep. Should be paved. Not talking a lot of money, I'm talking a thousand bucks.
Mr. Chairman.
Everything else.
I agree, Mr. Regan, plus our bylaws are pretty clear, I believe any parking space in commercial businesses have to get paid services. But a question through the chair of the applicant, but the design for retention is based on if those were impervious surfaces. So if the board were to ask for them to be paved as a condition or for the entire lot, it wouldn't affect the calculation.
Correct, that's correct.
Wouldn't affect them.
You done that? How is it still number eleven?
Number eleven. About the ownership of the two lots.
Yes.
I think that would just be a condition of approval.
So what I've, what I'm reading here is the, presented the project with two lots in common ownership. Should the board approve the project, a condition of approval should require the combining of the lots prior to issuance of building permit. It's a condition for the board to consider.
And then I believe the last comment, or second to last comment on page seven. It's about the contours in the subdrain. There's a subdrain proposed under this bioretention area and where the pipe daylights. It's a bit hard to see on this and we might be lacking an existing spot grade in this area. The pipe, I believe, is set at six fifteen and a half, the inverted pipe is set at six fifteen and a half. The existing grade there is at that elevation, so it's basically on daylight right there, so we don't believe that there's an issue.
Talking here.
Correct. There might just be some confusion with the six sixteen contours, there's two of them. And there's a low spot in between the two, so you can see where the six sixteen is on the right side. That's also a six sixteen to the left.
I see.
So there's a low spot between the two.
Oh, yeah. About fifteen is here. It's hard to tell because of the detail.
It is hard to tell in the designs.
Scott? Any questions or concerns?
No, I'd just like to see the lots combined, but.
And what John was saying as well.
Paved.
Paved.
John?
Same thing, paved, gotta be paved.
Paved.
I agree with the comments.
Myself also. Do we have a motion? Is there any public comment on this? There being none, they need a motion?
Okay, one more question on the faculty's on the bill, we asked this earlier. How much of the parking lot is that gonna illuminate? Do people actually see in the dark out there, going to their cars?
It's gonna illuminate in the area of the building. We didn't feel that it was necessary to have additional lighting towards the rear.
Something that's mounted to the building itself.
Something that's not.
It's like a floodlight.
It's not a very large parking lot.
See the street light in Appleton Road right there?
So that's what John figured out.
There's a utility pole, I'm not sure if there's a light.
I think there is.
You give me a couple minutes, I can find out.
I can actually see a couple of utility poles, but I don't know where the lighting is.
Right there, so.
You're going to the corner, but.
Yeah, this one up here. But faces retort. So you're gonna have a light on the building, shine out to the parking lot. Oh, sorry, exactly. Correct.
Anyway, we've got, I think, three shown. Yeah. Two shown, one of where the door is, one in the center of the house and one above the garage.
You feel there should be another, a little additional lighting on the parking lot, John?
I'm not exactly sure how wide the parking lot is, so.
Eighteen foot stall plus twenty-four foot aisle plus another eighteen feet for parking on the other side.
Sixty feet.
So they should probably, you should probably have something additional to light up towards the rear of that lot. Even if you can put it off the house.
Off the house.
Because there's nothing that it's gonna shine into in the back.
Yeah. That's what it's back there.
If you're walking out there, it's the winter time, ice patch.
Yep.
Winter ice.
Is there any public comment? Anything else from board members? Then you need to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Number two?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to approve site plan approval with conditions.
Make a motion to approve the site plan approval with the conditions.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Okay, so Matt, you wanna do the conditions? Are we in vote? Conditions we were soon discussed. Test pits performed by a licensed soil evaluator. Prior to issuance of building permit. The, what do you call it, gravel parking area shall be.
Paved.
Consistent impervious surface with the rest of the parking lot. The two lots under common ownership shall be combined, per recommendation of the peer review. And additional lighting as needed provided on the building.
I mean, if you have to put a poll up, we really don't care.
How would, who should be the reviewing authority? Is just for us to review, perhaps during construction, when he has build plan? This is something. Yeah, but I'm gonna make sure that lighting is sufficient according to a certain authority figure. Building Commissioner? Okay. So those and standard conditions for site plan review are standard construction hours. This being in an entirely high up business district, there is, there are some residents nearby. Up here, I guess that's the closest we're dealing with this. Your resident here.
I think the eight to four thirty is fine.
Yeah, I just see this, you know, close to the intersection with a middle school, buses, the morning and all that, I can see that being a whole lot of fun.
Well, why don't we go eight thirty to four thirty during the week and Saturday, eight to twelve? Everybody okay with that?
I'm gonna stretch the.
It's okay during daylight savings time, it doesn't do much good this time of year.
Yeah. Do you wanna stretch the evening hours up to five? I think we did that before on commercial district.
Sure, that makes sense.
So it'll be eight thirty to five Monday through Friday. And it's eight to noon on Saturday. Just keep that the same. Standard condition of bylaw approvals, conditions from state agencies, town boards, departments, commissions. You guys had other approvals to get from conservation zoning?
Yeah.
And those were secured.
Correct.
You already got the ZBA.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, you're clear. And conservation was a request for determination, they issued a negative determination on that, I'm pretty sure.
And then an order of conditions.
So I got that also. Excellent, so I should ask the, I already knew that, but I wanted to verify. Site lighting conform was section nine four six five.
Yeah.
Submit an as-built plan once construction is completed. And this one, the project development course with approved plan. This is not in the Asian one more deal zones, so I'll strike that condition. So the four conditions we added plus standard conditions, one through five. Four. Hours being eight thirty to five. Okay, what I have is a, not a signature sheet. This is pretty easy to do, since these are on a schedule periods. I'll draft it, circulate before review prior to issuance. Any questions on conditions or, you know, some, okay. Who should we get?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I just, I think people showed up, but it probably is totally not how it's meant to happen.
At this point, I will step aside as an abbot to the next project and Jason will act as chairman.
May I bring maybe for that? Yeah, just read it off.
Next up, the seven forty applicant, SWEV Development USA requesting site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the development of a six megawatt photovoltaic solar installation located at four thirty Rochdale Street.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, there was a gentleman here that was, we made the announcement that the, part of his team requested a continuance already and this item per pending vote of the board will be continued through the November twenty-eighth hearing. We made that announcement earlier, just not sure if anyone else showed up for four thirty Rochdale Street, it will not be heard today, it will be on the twenty-eighth. In the meantime, the applicant requests that the board consider commencing with the peer review process for their project so I can at least engage that prior to the next hearing, if the board will be okay with that. I will start that process.
Makes sense.
Okay. You can roll call.
Any objections?
Okay. And then you're just looking for a motion to continue?
Motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue to November twenty eighth, maybe? To November twenty eighth.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next public hearing on the agenda is seven fifty PM. The applicant is Wendy Lively requesting a special permit on the section five point three point two of the Auburn zoning bylaws for two hammerhead lots on property located at one oh three Elm Street.
Good evening. Our Bacon Civil Site Engineering, my business partner, Mike Yurka. Give a brief presentation.
Do we have a motion, open the public hearing?
Make the marshal open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
For the record, again, Mike Yurka, Civil Site Engineering, representing Ms. Lively. And the actual owners are Henry and Carol Sundine, trustees of the Elm Street local trust. We have a parcel of property at one oh three Elm Street, Auburn. And what our clients would like to do is with an existing house on it is create a separate lot for the existing house that comes along with the zoning. And then at the remaining land, create two hammerhead lots. And then at the remaining land, create two, uh, hammerhead lots. Again, fifty feet of footage and, uh, an acre, a little over an acre and a half for each lot. We had a meeting, Aiken had a meeting with the town boards last week, or over some issues with the fire department, I believe representative from the planning board, Luis. And basically, just a few comments they had were, was, had to do with driveway access, make sure that the access in the driveways, the constructed driveway, would be able to accommodate a fire truck, emergency vehicle, seeing these driveways would be, you know, a bit of a distance off the roadway. And I believe also they wanted separate addresses for these proposed lots, which at the time the mylar is to be created, the board of assessors, I understand, would, you know, give us the addresses, come up with the addresses for each lot. This, we're not asking for any waivers for any of your regulations, this conforms to all your regulations for the hammerhead lots. So, for that, I can open it up for any questions from the board, or is there anybody here for?
We'll, we'll ask that. The distance from the back of the original house existing to the first house on the left-hand hammerlot, what is that about?
See, this here is, yeah, so, it's about a hundred and, about a hundred and forty-five feet.
Okay. And the other one's probably about two twenty?
Yeah, 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 about two hundred and forty, two thirty, two forty. We also have them quite a distance, as you can see, from the back of the
The back?
Yes, yeah. These may shift a little bit inside the, inside that radius, but that's pretty much it.
Yeah, that left-hand one would shift to the upper
They shift up over, yes.
Up over the line.
Yeah, it's somewhere probably
That line right up in there would be maybe even a little bit
Sure.
Better. Let's see that. Matt, any?
Sure. I'll stack off some of the things that Mr. Bacon and I reviewed with the development coordinating group on Wednesday, last week. So, um, the fire department, I mentioned this, as you did, sir, being able to identify these driveways for their addresses from the street, whether it's by mailbox or some sort of signage or this little rock with a number, however you decide to do it, as long as they know the addresses of those, of all, both hammerhead lot driveways and the existing house. One of the discussions we had was perhaps, since you have one oh one next door, you might end up renumbering one oh three also and making that one the new ones or whatnot, but whatever ends up getting decided, so long as they're clearly labeled, it's a fire department. Those where they are. The house numbers, as you mentioned, getting those from the assessors when the plan's ready to be endorsed. You did state that the plan meets all the requirements of the hammerhead lot bylaw, and I will verify that by saying I did the same review, and Bacon and I were going back and forth with it, when this was originally proposed, and it meets all the, all the requirements of our hammerhead lot bylaws also. Things to consider, it was part of our discussion with the board of health that did, the development coordinating group was wells and septics, where things can be located, understanding that that's not what we're gonna be regulating here today, but just so that the board knows and has the conversation, it might be worth addressing, just how the house could shift based on where those could be located.
Sure. Yeah. Like I say, any, in this radius or diameter of a hundred and sixty feet, these can move around. We've done a, a repair to the septic system in front, so we've done perks for this lot here. And, uh, we would say, if you take a look, this is a system that sits in on the front lot, this is, this would be the front lot. And, uh, again, we had high groundwater in that area, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the area, it's a high groundwater. And the perk rate was approximately thirty-six minutes an inch, we got here forty minutes an inch, which is low with the title five. So with that, and the land pretty much being consistent from front of that, which we have So from the topographic mapping, this is the existing house, and it pretty much is consistent throughout the lot, there's no high mounds or any deep valleys here, so it's pretty straightforward. So you'd be looking at septic systems, like, like we just talked about, this house may move over here, so the systems would most likely be in the front and the wells in the back. As, as you can see, there's plenty of room on these lots.
How big did you say each lot was?
Each, this
How big, square feet?
Uh, square feet, this is sixty-six thousand six hundred.
And that was a little bigger.
Yeah, and this is sixty-nine and seven, so it's about one point six and one point five.
Acres.
Yeah, acres, yeah. So, yeah, they're not small lots, though.
Now, it's a kind of a good application for the hammerhead lot.
Yeah, and we're all come down to, like I say, the perk and depots here, and just by this being the same, we're assuming
You said your perks you felt would pass?
You know, never, you know, it did here.
It's a clay hill.
Yeah.
It's a clay hill, so
It's a, I believe it's a situate, lot park, a situate soil, it is tight soil, that's why we had the, the higher perk rate. But the groundwater, there's no question, I can tell you right now, the groundwater is like thirty inches, twenty-four to thirty inches. So just like this, it's a rain, a rain system.
Yeah. There's one in the house in that area, you can see they have a rain system
Yes, down below, yeah. Yeah, these, these houses, most likely, most likely the houses with dry unders on the left side there, with the rain system and the sloping coming down, so they would fit pretty well.
Yeah, they are consistent in grade going
Yeah, the whole hill's pretty consistent all the way down
To get the perks and the well, I think it's a good
Yeah.
I have a question for the chair. Can you flip to where you did the sewer? Read the septic system. So when you put the next house behind it
Yep.
Which is not that far from the septic system. And when you put the next system, system in front of that house, those septic systems are gonna be competing against each other for drainage?
They're going to be, this is here, but again, we may move that back, so I would say it'd be, it probably be, probably about a hundred and twenty-five feet apart, systems.
In part of locating, sorry, through the chair.
Yeah.
In part of locating those, they have to be certain proximities away from the wells.
Correct.
Exactly.
Distance apart.
Distances apart from the wells, like, hundred, hundred
Well, you've got room to shift.
Oh, that's, that's, exactly, exactly. I mean, this is just a conceptual show that we can put the diameter and put the houses in.
Per the, Mr. Chairman, through the hammerhead lot provision, so long as that house is still located within the circle that's drawn on the plan, it can be located anywhere
If you go on the top half, each one of them, and you give them a little more space, they'd, plus, it'd be almost a little better to see them on the top half, as I think of it, because they're just further away from being in the backyard of the other guy.
Absolutely.
I mean, we've had some that are very close, but these are exceptional, they're quite a distance that they can be apart. Did, were you gonna present anything?
No, no, I just let him take care of it all.
Matt, any other questions?
I did not.
Is there any public comment? There being none, do we have a motion to approve? Close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. It is a vote, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, um, standard conditions, special permits. I didn't have a signature page for this, because the special permit's different from the ones that we did earlier. I have to make sure the findings are consistent with the bylaws. And the one condition I want to ask, for special permits, is we can decide if these ones just stay with the applicant, non-transferable, I would recommend that we don't do that, so that the special permit stays with the land for the hammerhead lot. I believe it's the intent of the applicant to sell the property eventually down the line, so if we were to restrict it to just the applicant, the next person has to reapply it.
No, that's fine.
I certainly wanna, wanna make that. Some change in state legislation for special permits is that, in the past, we were able to give, a project elapsed after a period of two years if construction hadn't begun. Legislation has changed where that can be increased up to three years, so the board can determine if they want, assuming if this project doesn't work out for whatever reason, if it can go up to two to three years before the board considers that to be
Gone, rescind.
Yeah, rescind, right. So we can pick up here at twenty-four, thirty-six months.
Fine, thirty-six months. John? Gundy? No, you can't do it.
Good.
Good.
Any questions about construction hours, standard hours?
Standard hours.
Okay. I will use these standard conditions and draft a decision up within the next week or so. And it will be signed by the board at their next meeting. I will share the decision, as far as to review the draft before it's signed. It'll be signed at their meeting on November twenty-eighth.
Okay. And then we'll come back after that with the A and R's, then.
Yeah. Straighten that out with the assessors also.
Numbers, yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, mate. Next item on the agenda is an eight PM public hearing. The applicant, Auburn Planning Board, we request to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of a definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-one and eighty-one W and Auburn Subdivision Rules and Regulations, section six point three for a subdivision known as Packchug Farms at seventy-one Curtis Street. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make the motion open the meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is open. Is an applicant present? So my first question is, where have you been?
It's not so much
How long, Matt?
Two years.
It's been a while.
It's not so much where I've been, it's where my partner has been. She fell ill, gravely ill, and underwent some treatment, and her being the legal half of this team, and I only know how to build things, it kind of, we kind of got setback.
Okay. You wanna speak, Matt?
Yeah, I'll just kind of go over while we're here, and how we would perceive from here, Mr. Antonelli and I connected prior to this hearing, and then kind of went over how we expect this to go this evening, so I just want to make it clear for the folks that are here, I know Mrs. Sullinger's here from the neighborhood also, you're here for this one also, sir? Sorry, I don't believe in that yet, but either way, um, part of this rescission, the board's within their authority under master and all autours and subdivisions if they've gone inactive for a period of time, and it's based on a handful of things that may or may not have been the case for this project. Regardless of how it's advertised at this time, we did send out certified letters, unfortunately, those went to two addresses that are no longer serviceable, so they both bounced back to us, notification for rescission is, has failed. So the board can't vote on our rescission this evening, for that reason, in addition to a couple others that I'm about to mention. So the decision that was done on April twenty-third of twenty fifteen, hadn't been recorded. It's, I don't, it's not worth discussing where it is, I don't know, all I know is it's not at the town clerk's office typically, that means the town clerk, yeah, it's the applicant, to get it recorded, it wasn't recorded, regardless, it's not recorded, it doesn't matter. So the board can't rescind a decision that's not recorded. So therein lies our, our second thing. Alright? Now, here's where the, here's where the board's authority comes into play. If the decision surfaces, and it's found, and it is recorded somehow, even though the registry's not supposed to at this point, the board would then be faced with, in theory, a mylar, or a covenant in which the board would not be, in my, in my opinion, advised to sign or endorse that plan based on a decision with conditions that are two and a half years old, and some of those which had not been
Met, because they were already done, correct. Some of the things that were part of the acceptance.
So, in understanding some of the complications with this, Mr. Antonelli and I, and talked about refiling, getting, getting a fresh new application in with plans that are already done, this should be something that can be done within the next handful of days or so, to hopefully get on for the next meeting, there's still an advertising window for us. If it's refiled as is, you have a, you have a plan that was already done through peer review, so, but I would ask that if the board wanted to consider taking on the new application, and possibly waiving application fees, which are absorbed, and, you know, they've already been applied for. I think Mr. Antonelli is honest when he says that this is her, that it's built, and I certainly think that's a legitimate reason for which the project is to be, he also told me recently that you're moving into the property so that you can start the project.
An urban resident.
Yeah, so it seems like
To facilitate.
It certainly does, thank. Notwithstanding that the, the conditions that were in play in the past, are the ones that are no longer applicable, I'll just read for the record. There was a portion of, this could have been done after the covenant, but anyways, a widening of the public portion of Curtis Street. The town had already done that, I think it was six months after this approval or so, but, and the sewer was ill, and you guys were able to plug that, so that's one condition we couldn't carry over anyway, so that's the rule.
Because it's already done.
Right.
It would have been something that you were gonna have a part of, and pay for, or be responsible for, but now the town did it, so we gotta
You didn't do anything.
Right. I'll definitely get into that, too. So, the other, some other conditions that hadn't been done was getting a letter of approval from the engineering division regarding the hydrology report prior to endorsement. So that, that part, I, I don't understand, because, well, I, I understand that you don't have the letter, but we did all of the test pits, we, Bill came, Mr. Coyle came, viewed all of the test pits, I don't know
Well, Matt, you can look at that.
Yeah.
That, that must have to come back to refriend.
So contact the assessor for street numbers for the lots before the endorsement, it's just, these are steps that would have been done before the endorsement, it's just that things happen where you couldn't get those done. It's not, it's not a deal, it's just, we can't endorse a plan based on these conditions because they're, they're not applicable anymore, they weren't done. So that's why refiling
Refile.
Do a new application, I think, is the, is the cleanest way for both parties, the project still stays active, in a sense that you already have something that's been peer reviewed and easy enough for the board to review.
You know, everything's apples for apples and all of that, the only thing that concerns me is that there were things that you were supposed to do, and I don't know if there's something in the future when we would address the new plan and vote on that, that you could do in lieu of what you didn't do for the other part, because it was part of the approval.
It's kind of, I, I think I understand what you're trying to say, I alluded to this a little bit, town engineer may, may need work in front of this, and I know Mr. Sullinger knows, part of the condition was for the applicant here to improve the roadway in front of their lot alone. Not sure, and in a brief discussion I have with the town engineer, he's not sure if that needs to be pulverized in addition to this, but that's a conversation you guys can have during that public hearing process, I don't know what sort of, I don't want to pretend like I know how that works. So, I think it's also worth, also worth discussing at a future time, any other, any other things that might, might come into play, and I'm sure they've already And I'm sure the butters have concerns also. So...
It will be advertised and...
It will be re-advertised. I don't want to start tacking things on and approval. I don't think that's appropriate. But I think what the board should be doing is at least trying to revalidate any conditions they had at the time to make sure those things are done before we put another sample...
And he refiles.
Correct, correct. But procedurally, for what's open right now for the rescission hearing...
We can't.
We couldn't even act. So it has to be continued by the floor.
Because you have to do the notification.
Yeah, so it's... In my opinion, carry that over to the next meeting. If in between, Mr. Antonelli puts his filing together and we have an advertisement, then we'll just withdraw.
At next meeting, whenever of a good timeframe, the notification to the right people.
Correct.
We can discuss the same rescission. And at that time, he can discuss whether or not he wants to refile and with all those other conditions.
Correct. Yes.
Scott? You okay?
Yep.
John? Wendy? Jason?
Good.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that everything understood.
I understand. So we will continue this public hearing until November 28?
Yeah, I'd just ask if there's public comment first.
Yes. Any public comment?
Yes, Mark Solinger at the Curtis Street. So two years ago, this was so though approved, whatever you want to call it, the Curtis Street was paved. And I worked with Mr. Coyle on that. And I paved the private part of Curtis Street personally down to South Old.
To where it takes the bend?
Yes. We now have roughly 200 feet that has not been resurfaced.
How many feet?
About 200, whatever the frontage of 71 is.
270.
Has not been resurfaced. So we have brand-new, old, brand-new. Okay? Whatever happened with the planning, you know, either the town or the applicant really needs to redo that part of the road.
That was repaving?
Repaved, yes.
No, that was part of... That was one of the conditions. Yes.
So I mean, refiling or not refiling. Okay, I worked with the town, spent considerable amount of money upgrading the bottom part of the street with the knowledge that that 270 feet would be repaved. Okay? So this going forward or not, my expectation from the town is that gets repaved. All right? That was the whole deal of doing that.
Isn't it private at this point?
Sure, I'll throw the chair over. Let's just kind of elaborate that. And I believe, and I fully understand what you're saying. So at the time, we had an approved subdivision. Mr. Solinger and the town operated to improve that section of the private street that you mentioned. Nope. Assuming that we had a project that was approved, that would be doing the rest of the improvements at the time. That's part of the other reason why... Part of the reason I also don't want to see this rescinded for the reason that, to make sure that that gets done also.
So is that whole 270 feet private?
Yes.
Last time I here, it wasn't private. So then that brings us another problem of entering a private road into a... A road into a private road. That has another problem.
Sure.
That was not addressed at the last meeting two years ago because it was said that that part of the Curtis Street where the road would come in was not a private way. So that needs to be addressed by this board correctly because that is not proper to do a road into a private road without all butters saying yes.
Correct. So the public section ends right about the hydrant, which is right here, and the rest of it is the private street. And now, any butter on a private road is within their right to improve said section of a private street as you exercised yet. So if this is brought up to standards by the applicant in this case, and we can discuss it a few weeks, obviously, with the town engineer would be helpful also. At that time, we could decide if the board wants to accept any more parts of Curtis Street to make it public. But you need permission from all the buddy ones so they're private at that time.
Well, we can make it public. I just want the agreement that was made two years ago fulfilled, that that part of Curtis Street will be done. Otherwise, at the time, I would have paved the rest of the private road, private Curtis Street. And to get the contractor down there now to go do that is extremely expensive. They were on the street and I was able to get a relatively good deal to do the... Whatever hundreds of feet I did. Okay, so to me, I find this is unfair. The other thing, so Mr. Hill is not here. Mr. Daniels is also ill yesterday or day before. And there's a couple of things. The three new houses on South Old. Water is quite bad. You can see the rivulets going on properties and stuff. I don't know this plan as it was two years ago, took into account that those new houses and for water runoff and everything because it's quite a bit different than when the original plan was put into effect. And the other one is retaining wall that is between 71 and Mr. Hill's, which is whatever number, is also a problem.
Mr. Hill is in 73?
Yeah. So there's a large stone retaining wall. You can see that ad portion itself, so...
It actually looks like the foundation of an old structure, not a retaining wall. It actually looks like it's historical or something.
If it falls, it's going to just go random.
I just made an observation of it.
Is that on your land?
Yes.
Yes.
So that needs to... That has, over the last couple of years, it's gotten progressively worse, including the large tree that was there fell because of that problem.
Because it was eroded?
So... Just for numerous neighbors' story.
No, it's fine.
The thing is, if the project, it was not recorded and it didn't happen, there can be a possible rescission by us. But it's in between, there's someone... If he just walked away and he didn't want to refile, which we're asking him to do, then there'd be absolutely nothing you could do. You know, the town would just... You'd be at the will of the town, town engineer, to say that he could take care of that. But what we're trying to do is get him to refile so we can come through it and then he'll maybe be willing to obligate...
Is there eight, five lots?
How many?
I think it's seven.
Seven?
The seventh is the existing house. Six in the existing house.
Six houses in the existing house. So...
But you could see the houses. That's an old picture, but there's large retaining walls behind all of those houses.
You mean stone walls?
Yeah, concrete bricks, a box.
I don't know if this is relevant.
Behind the three new houses on South Old.
Like what you're seeing 176, 174, and 175?
Yeah, there's retaining walls here.
And they built them out of concrete block?
I think of concrete block, yeah.
Mr. Jimmy? Yeah, either way, I mean, these are items that we'd have to discuss in the public hearing for the subdivision itself.
My uncle is that, like I said, two years ago, with the faith of the town. And I worked with the town to, you know, improve Curtis Street, that part, with the other part. Okay? Now we have 270 feet that is... So sooner or later, it's going to undermine it due to construction going into the... It's all downhill at that point.
So we'll be back here in two weeks on the 28th in...
Does that... Well, that won't give me time to notify and advertise and everything that's necessary, will it?
Well, it'll give us enough time to decide on the rescission. Because you'll have adequate notification to those people.
Right, for the chair. If you're able to get stuff in by Thursday, that gives us time to advertise.
Tomorrow? I mean, two days away?
Yeah, if not, then we'll do it in the December meeting.
Okay.
The December meeting would be...
That's the best we can do.
It would be the 12th. Any deadline for that? It's November... Oh, it's Thanksgiving, so it'll be the Tuesday, the 21st.
Make a motion to continue. The 12th. Second. Does John have any questions?
Do you have any questions, sir?
Well, I guess you can ask questions at the... Like the castrated one?
Name and address, please.
Shane Jackson, last time we drove.
Okay.
So is it like... We're going to build roads in the property, like how do you get to those six houses?
He'll go perpendicular off the street into the land.
Do you have one?
I'd be happy to share the plans with you if you want to come by the office at some point. These things, it was approved two and a half years ago for a dead-end cul-de-sac street on the property.
So you build the street into the property, private street?
Yeah, it'd be a public way once finished.
And approved by the town.
Took a public into a private street.
That's why the corner, I remember I was talking about that, has to be made public if the dead-end piece is going to be public also.
You know why your street's private?
And we can do that now?
So it's for private, and I tried to why, and no, we can change from public to private. From the fire hydrant and down.
Yes, upgrades. There's no consequence right now.
All right, we're going to continue this public hearing till December 12th, and everyone's welcome to come back at that time.
This rescission is till the 28th.
The decision... The rescission discussion will be on the 28th of November. And then we're going to have a continuance to the 12th for...
We're continuing this...
Oh, it's just going to be a brand-new application on the 12th, if he does in fact do it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Done.
Make a motion to continue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Just quickly, so by the 21st, for the 12th of December, and the rescission hearing is on the 28th.
If you get the admin before the rescission hearing, it'll be a real quick rescission hearing.
The app, yes. I'm not all... No notification things.
We take care of it.
Okay. I'll try with the app.
Okay, remember...
Do everything you need. I'll just... Thank you.
All right. For discussion, associate member vacancy, do you know anybody? Ask them if I... Detention upon maintenance, DPW equipment purchase. I believe they're buying a mini excavator. Matt, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, so I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to see the balance of our account. But for subdivisions in Auburn for the last decade or so, after a public road is built...
We take...
Yeah. Prior to town meeting vote, they have to deposit a certain amount of funds into our detention...
Management.
Management account. It's based on the square footage area, detention basis calculations because of the dollar figure. For example, Bill George did the one off Paul River Road, off Barn Street, created Paul River Road, and ended up having to put like $10,000 into the detention.
Okay, so we have X amount of money.
We have a bunch of money there.
Thought it was around 100, but you're not sure.
I know it's up there. So the town engineer would like to purchase a mini excavator with those funds to perform detention-based management throughout town on the ones that we're supposed to. Not asking the board's permission to do it really, because it's not kind of how this works. It's just to let us know that... Yeah, it is. And that's why we're not voting on it. I'm just letting you guys know that the funds that we've been accruing are starting to go towards a piece of equipment that'll go to good use.
We know. Additional content? Matt?
I do not.
Decision, Faith Avenue realignment.
Okay, so I have that here. So I apologize that I know everyone's ready to go, but this one's not short. So in the extra piles you had when you sat down, there was a copy of this draft decision. And I added some conditions for us to consider. Now, Ms. Steinhauer wasn't here for this one, so if we're going to amend the vote, she just has to abstain.
You're excused.
We still have minutes, right?
I can't disprove Matt either because I wasn't here.
Those two September minutes, right? You'll see some highlighted conditions on page two. And those conditions are... I think it'd be helpful to have an amendment to the motion that was made by... Motion was made by Mr. Wren and second by Mr. Fable. So we're looking for amended motion to include the additional conditions you see highlighted.
Want to do that now?
Yes.
Scott, are you willing to amend your motion?
I am, yes.
We need a second?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And they will include these highlighted?
Yes.
The applicant shall ensure that all final recorded easement documents are provided to the planning board prior to the board's endorsement of the plan. The applicant shall have soil testing performed by a licensed soil evaluator in accordance with the stormwater management guidelines and witnessed by the town engineer or designated representative. Results of these tests and any necessary modifications to the plans or stormwater analysis must be provided to the planning board prior to the endorsement of the plan. The applicant is responsible for recording this decision no later than 90 days after certificate of no appeal is signed by the town clerk. Construction vehicles shall not park within the right-of-way while loading or unloading material in a manner which hinders traffic circulation unless a police detail is approved by the chief of police. The applicant shall provide draft...
Mr. Bryce, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. You don't have to read the last one, I'll tell you why. So this was language that was introduced by town council and approved by town council that I've added. I bounced this back off Diamond's attorney, and he had some revisions to this that I need to have. And I got this at 5:30 today, so town council hasn't checked on these revisions yet.
So Scott, amend... We're going to amend this in the second again for the first four.
We don't have to amend the motion that was just made because we're including these conditions per se, but the language might change a little bit before we...
On the...
Before the final edition is issued. So that condition, if you will, if you... I'll try to read it in a way that it's been edited, but I don't want to mess it up. The applicant shall provide draft legislation to the planning board, which shall be presented for approval by the board of selectmen for inclusion on a warrant for town meeting at the earliest opportunity, in which, if passes, shall authorize the board of selectmen to petition the great general court to enact special legislation to authorize the town to accept as a new townway the roadway shown as parcel B and to discontinue as a townway the portion of Faith Avenue shown as... Portion of Faith Avenue to be discontinued. The applicant understands and recognizes that without the enactment of such special legislation, votes of town meeting will be required to discontinue said portion of Faith Avenue as identified herein and to accept the new roadway as a townway. So that language just needs to be approved by town council. It's so much fun. But since we've made the amended vote...
So it's plus or minus then?
Yes, I do have a signature page, and once I clean that up, I'll recirculate.
Signing a lot of stuff for you.
Yes, and I greatly appreciate that. You are shortening your future agendas.
Or giving you a lot of rope.
Yeah.
To hang us.
You guys will see all of these before I get to anyone else. Aside from town council, of course.
Want a date on this?
Yes, please.
Next, no correspondence. Minutes of 9:12, 9:26, and 10:10. They're all in here, Shannon?
10:10 was added.
Was it?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:12:17.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a second?
Second.
All those at second? Was who, Scott, you doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 26.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain from 10:10.
Motion to approve 10:10. I'll still get it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. All minutes were approved. Next meeting, November 28, 2017. Anything else, Matt?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.